We are now reconvening in open session. This is the Northampton School Committee's regular meeting of January tenth, two thousand and three thirteen. We've just come out of an executive session and we're returning to the regular agenda of the open meeting. The next item on our agenda is some organizational matters. And the two items that you have on there for organization is the election of a vice-chair person and setting the annual meeting schedule. I've been, I've received a number of questions about this issue of the election of a vice-chair. Your current rules call for the annual election of a vice-chair. In consulting with the city solicitor and looking at the, at the new charter, if the school committee wishes to elect, go ahead and have an election for vice-chair this month, that would be fine, but going forward after the next municipal election, the vice-chair under the charter would be elected at the start of the term and would serve for the duration of the term, for the two-year term. That's the intent, that's the, the language of the charter. So the, the, that would be going forward. So that, for this, for the remainder of this term, it would be appropriate if, if that's what the school committee wishes to do, is if they would like to have that election, they could do that. Ms. Minnick?
They didn't want to do that. And I would just, just straight out of the bag, I believe that we tabled the election of vice-chairperson until February meeting. And I'll explain why.
So you would like to postpone consideration of that? Postpone the, the election? Okay. So there's been a motion to postpone and it's been seconded? Okay?
My rationale is that I believe that the Rules and Policy Subcommittee on Monday will have a meeting that will be considering the rules and procedure in light of the Charter revision. And there is just a lot of stuff in there that's going to be cleaned up and made to match. And my feeling is that until such time as another vice-chair is elected, the vice-chair from last year will continue to serve. And indeed, we may decide that we don't even need to have the election of a new vice-chair, but if we chose to make arrangements during this transition period, I just think it should be clear, right now, there is language in our existing Rules and Procedure regarding the length of the term and the number of terms that a vice-chair can serve. And I think if we can have a chance to clean up the Rules and Procedure, then everything might be more straightforward in electing a vice-chair if we choose to do that. Otherwise, the existing vice-chair will just continue to serve. That is my rationale for making that motion.
Okay.
It's not a personal thing. It's just a procedural thing.
And that committee's meeting on Monday?
That's correct.
So, Mr. Moore?
Yes. My concern with this motion in front of us is that we will need to have a vice-chair during the coming year until the next term starts and the rules of the new charter take effect. And it's been my understanding that Stephanie has said she would rather not continue as vice-chair this coming year. And so I think I would like to ask Stephanie.
I'm, I'm willing to see what happens at Rules and Policy. And I appreciate that. I'm okay with this. I, I think it makes some sense to talk it through first.
It would probably, because then who, if, if there was someone running, they'd at least know the parameters based on the rules and what they'd be running under. So that would be good.
When is Rules and Policy? Monday, the fourteenth or one to three? At one, one to three.
At one?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. Do we, we didn't have to consider yours, did we?
So, um, is there any other discussion about the motion to postpone consideration of the election of a vice-chairperson until the next meeting? Harry?
I just have one question in regards to the population, the populating of our, our subcommittees. That would still happen in the month of January. And if it did, would our current vice-chair do that?
According to the Charter, all subcommittees are now named by the chair. So that, that person won't change.
Yeah, that is correct. And, and, and so that would be, that is one of those issues too, that is, is actually tied into the rules. Because the Charter, that is an issue that the school committee will need to look at, whether it intends to have its committees change every January, or whether it will have its committees serve for the term, for the two-year term. So that will be an issue that needs to be looked at. As chair, my intent is to keep the committees the same until we, after we have that discussion. And if that means just I'll reappoint, I'm reappointing all the same committees, I can do that. Or if we want to postpone until we've, until the Rules Committee's had a chance to look at that question. But I, I actually don't, yeah.
Rules and Policy Committee is actually planning to meet.
Yeah.
Because we talked about canceling that meeting because we want the Rules and Policy Committee to be on.
And I actually think that your, I mean, even looking at your, the current rules, that I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that all the committees dissolve at the strike of New Year's every year. That I think the, the current committees can continue to function until such time that new committees are appointed. So, and I think particularly given the, yeah.
Which loophole, or whatever the right word is, I suggest that we wait on the vice-chair. But because I think the existing vice-chair will continue to serve in that capacity until we change something.
Mm-hmm.
As vice-chair until someone else is elected, or until she's re-elected, or until we change the rules.
That would be correct. And that's, I think that's the intent of your motion. Yeah, exactly. Any other discussion about that? Okay, so the motion on the table then is to, is to postpone the election of a vice-chair until your next meeting? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous. The next item is the setting of the annual meeting schedule. And I believe you've received a copy of a proposed meeting schedule as it is known right now. This is obviously always subject to change and...
Handout.
Oh, there's a handout. So, I, I guess the tradition has been that there's a motion to set the annual meetings. I'm not sure, it's an agenda item, so I'm not sure if it's a...
Just a point of information.
Okay. So then, as a point of information...
To look at and see if there are any concerns.
The annual meeting schedule is posted for you to look at? Okay.
May I comment?
Certainly.
I would really hope that we would consider strongly adding other meetings in the months that are not the budget months. During the last few years, routinely had meetings that went until eleven o'clock at night, which I don't think serves any purpose. And we've neglected to really pay attention to things. A couple of years ago, we started, we read a book about it being an effective school committee. And we've completely dropped that because we've been, our agendas have been completely filled up with just dealing with things we've kind of had to do, urgent matters. I think we need more time to do a good job of dealing with important things. And including our own self-evaluation, as well as a number of other things that people have mentioned over the last couple of years. I would really urge us, instead of thinking that, well, we do this big push at a bunch of time and then sort of just go back, is to recognize that the, that the fall and even the summer are, be really useful times to do a lot of the things that we talk about but never have time to do, such as working on, oh, say, being a more effective body as a group, working for increased funding for schools, things like that.
Okay. So there, and I, and I think that, I don't know whether this is an issue that Rules and Policy discusses as, in terms of whether or not the meeting dates have, or has been embedded in the rules, or anything like that, or where, where the decision, how, how many meetings to have takes place? I don't know.
We have talked, we have changed our protocol many times over the years. And we have always had discussion here about how to do that. And most recently, we, we decreased the number of subcommittee meetings that we have because especially for the, for the curriculum committee, we, as a full board, felt that we should all be hearing what's going on in that meeting. In Rules and Policy, it's a little bit different because what they're doing is often tedious and they do a lot of legwork for us before it comes here. And budget, we've kind of gone back and forth, but budget's always been a good kind of preparation for presenting to the board. But we have had, we have had the discussion before that having two meetings a month allows us to have more time for philosophical discussion, for debate, for non-financial topics. In the summertime, it's been hard because so many people are away at different points in the summer. But it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be thinking about that for, for the other three seasons, not just the budget season.
Essentially, the fall is the time I'm looking at the calendar.
I don't know if when Rules and Policy looks at the bylaws, which talk about how often subcommittee meetings are meeting and what the regulations for that are, if they might not also talk about some options and present that to us as a board.
Ms. Minnick?
I have a very specific question on this meeting schedule for any meeting, which says Tuesday, February the fifth, there's a full board meeting, a special meeting for all, and it says it's at four, and I thought it was from six to seven thirty. Is it really at four? That's all that it says. I'll have to check if I thought it was at four, yeah.
Okay.
I have six to seven thirty.
You should keep in mind, this is not the official meeting posting. We're, they're still required to post the meetings, so if there's clarification that has to happen.
I just checked my calendar properly. So I'm just... But are you looking for a motion to approve this schedule?
I'm told that you don't have, I was told that that was not necessary. I was actually, you know, when we were putting this together, I was unsure why it was on the agenda, but as I'm told, it's more for informational purposes. So it's not an actual action item, I don't believe. Unless, and that may be something in the rules.
It's, it's fifteen point one, at the organizational meeting in January, the date and time of the regulations will be set.
And so I, that's why I asked, do we want a motion to set the schedule? But I, so I don't know define what set means.
Maybe we'll table this until the next meeting and set it at our real live organizational meeting.
Again, I, I think it's a good opportunity to kind of look at all these things with a fresh, you know, clean slate and, and figure out whether they make sense anymore.
Well, I just have a question on the joint school committee and the city council meeting. Do you know if it's going to be here this year? Because it was not here last year, or is it here, I mean, I don't remember.
I was actually going to announce that a little bit later, but it is, I can actually say, it's on there, it's, it's going to be held here.
Okay, is it?
Yeah. Any other questions about setting the schedule? Okay, so I think we've acknowledged this could be a, still a work in progress. And so, but this at least gives the outline of what the schedule will look like.
I did go to check for the...
Okay. So it's all kosher and...
It's a kosher calendar.
Kosher calendar, that's good. Okay. All right. So then we will now move along to the, to the next item on the agenda, which is our public comment period. And we have one resident who's signed up to speak in public comment, Gina Norton-Smith. Gina?
Hello? Do you want me to say my address?
You can certainly state it, just name and address.
Thirty-seven Murphy Terrace, Northampton. And I have two children, one at the high school and one here at JFK. I'm here to talk about the incident in December. And I first want to commend you for how serious you took the threat that appeared at the high school. I'm very pleased that you, the school administrators reacted so quickly and to keep the students safe. But I also want to say that I wish you had taken it even more serious. And by that, I mean by what your response was in terms of the entire student body. I'm dismayed by what I read in the newspaper about this pledge that students were provided to sign. I am dismayed that my child was required to give police evidence. Since when in this country are people required to give evidence against, potentially against themselves, to police? I am dismayed that he was not given a choice to provide this evidence. When he, he asked if he was required to do it, he was told he was required to do it. And then to be found out later, he was, it was not required. I am dismayed that now that the police have a sample of my child's handwriting. And I'm concerned that this sample of my child's handwriting will become part of a police file that he now has, that will follow him the rest of his life. I am concerned that I don't know what this pledge that my son signed says. I don't know what it says. I, I don't know what he was pledging to do. I feel like I should be told what it was that he was required to fill out. This wasn't an acknowledgement of what's in the school conduct code. This went beyond that. And I know it's in the school conduct code. You sent it home to me. This you did not send home to me. I am concerned that I get phone calls from, from the schools about fundraisers, but I was not told about this. I hope that the school committee was informed and involved in this decision to, to do this investigation. I'm concerned that this was the avenue that was thought best to go, to investigate this situation. I'm concerned that for not just my son, but all of the eight hundred or so students at the high school now, and their parents, their families, find themselves in this situation. I'm concerned that the adults who are in charge of my son's safety did not put his future and his constitutional rights at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the public comment session? Okay. Hearing none, we will then move on to the next item, which are announcements. Are there any announcements from the members of the school committee?
I have, I just wanted to take one minute. As many of you know, last week, Northampton said goodbye to two retired guidance counselors and principals who served Northampton Public Schools for a combined total of sixty-nine years. Mr. Robert Young and Ms. Kay Sheehan, these two wonderful individuals helped shape the Northampton Public School system into what it is today. They touched the lives of thousands of students, staff, and families. Although I did not know Mr. Young all that well, I know of many who did and who enjoyed listening to his many, and I enjoyed listening to many of the stories told about him either as his time as a guidance counselor, or as a principal at one of the many schools here in town that he led. Ms. Sheehan, on the other hand, I had the pleasure of knowing quite well. Her contributions to the lead school and the entire school system have been something that really has been wonderful and tremendous. What I'll remember most about Kay is the many conversations I had with her before and after Sunday Mass, where she always sought me out to talk to me about a school-related topic. Most of all, I will remember her for the praise she always gave to me and to our committee for the countless hours of work we put into our schools. She always would end our conversations by saying how happy she was that I was a member of the school committee. And I know it's these words, these encouraging words, that I will personally miss about her the most. And so at this time, I would ask that we all take a moment and remember these two fine educators for their services to our schools and to honor them with a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salsky. Are there any other announcements? I did want to just make one announcement, and that was, today we've posted and you should be receiving electronic copies of it, of a joint meeting of the city council and school committee that is called in accordance with our new Northampton Charter, section seven dash two, annual budget policy. It'll be held Thursday, January thirty-first, at seven P.M. here in the community room. And by Charter, it is a meeting at which the mayor is required to review the financial condition of the city, revenue and expenditure forecasts, and other relevant information in order to develop a coordinated budget. So it's essentially the kickoff of the budget season for the city of Northampton. So that's new information. The other announcement I wanted to make was about the budget timeline, because I know that that was a question at, at past meetings. So the January thirty-first meeting is that joint meeting of the city council and school committee. And again, using the dates that are now in the Charter, the April seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen is the date by which the adopted budgets of the Northampton Public Schools and the Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School must be submitted to the mayor so that I can then prepare the overall city budget. And then May sixteenth is the date under, by which I must present the FY two thousand and fourteen budget to the city council. So the key date for the school committee is April seventeenth. And we'll be publishing the schedule on the calendar, et cetera, but I, I wanted to let you know about that because I know that was an issue we've talked about. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is recommended actions. And we have our consent agenda, which includes this evening, the approval of the minutes of the special school committee meeting held on Wednesday, December fifth, two thousand and twelve. There are no contracts this evening. And then we have field trip requests for the high school, E.O. Smith High School in Storrs, Connecticut, on February second, two thousand and thirteen. And again, for NHS, a field trip to Montreal, Canada, April fifth through sixth, two thousand and thirteen. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm not to approve it.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say.
I just wanted to notice that the physics teachers is in the audience.
Okay.
Assume with the robotics field trip. And I just wanted to thank you for doing that project.
Now, and I didn't hear that as one of the items to be considered, or is that the robotics field trip request?
It is.
Yeah. Two field trips?
Just, oh, did I not?
We have them. March seventh and March twenty.
Oh, okay, I did not read those because my agenda was, did not include, so yeah, it does include the robotics trip to Worcester, March seventh through ninth, and the robotics trip to Hartford, March twenty-eighth and thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the consent agenda is approved. I will now move into reports and recommendations, and I will ask our student representative to deliver a student report for this month.
Thank you. I want to start by saying I hope everybody had a good holiday. It was a much-needed break for me to spend a week off, do away from school and spend time with the family, so I hope everybody else enjoyed their time. I want to start off first with something that's going on right now at the high school. As we speak, is the One Axe Festival, which is Steve Eldridge and his productions of student-run one-acts, which are roughly about five to fifteen minutes, some are a little bit longer. And these are all student-run, all student-produced, and it's a recommendation for you to see it, either, obviously not tonight, but tomorrow or on Saturday, they will be going on throughout the night. So it is something that's very fun to watch. I've seen, these have been going on for the last few days, the rehearsals, and they are very well done. And the students have put a lot of effort towards these shows. Secondly, is this weekend, I believe, is the AP prep session for science, which a lot of students, as you know, take AP classes at the high school, and science is one of the major ones besides English. And the Math and Science Initiative that has been going on in Massachusetts has very, has helped us succeed a lot in these APs. And we've become second in the state for AP scores besides Boston Latin. And again, there is just some disproportion in terms of student size, but science has really, really, the students in the science class have stepped up and tried their best, and they have succeeded very, very well. So it is something that teachers take seriously and students take seriously. So this Saturday, there will be a prep session at the high school for students who will be with their teachers, covering some of the material that they might not be able to cover throughout the courses because of advisories or because of some interruptions they won't be able to get to. So it is a good, a good weekend session for them to know this material, to get ready for this AP session, which will help them get credit for college wherever they shall go. Also, next Thursday is the music and band concert. And for those of you that were able to see in downtown Northampton on first night, the Northhamtones, which practice very hard, the music productions are, the music and band is taken very seriously. And so their production next Thursday will be a combination of the band and chorus. And I recommend you guys, you guys go see that because it is very, very well rehearsed. The band and Beau have put time into this for the last few months to rehearse for this and get this production ready. They had a little blip with, of course, break, where they weren't able to practice and rehearse, but they have gotten back to the swing of things and ready to go for this. Next Friday is Martin Luther King Junior Day for us. Obviously, we don't have school on the following Monday as a holiday. And so what SOCA, the Students of Color Association, is doing is showing us the movie Ruby Gates on next Friday for fourth period, and that is a school-wide assembly to see this movie. And it is based off an African-American woman who was a student down in the south, and she was one of the first ones to go to school in a segregated school, or integrated school, excuse me. And so it was, is a very good film, and got a lot of awards for this. And so it's something to kind of open our eyes to the situation, because a lot of students don't understand Martin Luther King Day in terms of its context. A lot of students just think it's a holiday off, and it's not really well-celebrated like it should be, and dedicated as it should be. So that's something that I cherish, not just to have, to appear it off to see a movie, it's actually to learn and to understand more about this situation that's going on. I find it interesting, and I enjoy to see, oh, will enjoy seeing that. Also, next, it's actually, excuse me, on February seventh, there's going to be, it's the Second Intergeneration Panel Discussion, which is members of the Northampton Council on Aging and members of Northampton High School will have a meeting in the library at Northampton High School to discuss about what it's like to be a teenager. And this is something I was able to experience last year, and something that it, last year there was about seven members of the student on the Council on Aging that came. And it's just for them to understand what it's like for us to be a student at Northampton High School, and to kind of ask them questions about what it was like for them to be a student, to be a teenager. And kind of compare and contrast and have this relationship with members in the community who we don't really get to see that often, or who you don't, we don't have this interaction with, who are still supporting us in the city of Northampton. So it's good for both students and the Council on Aging to kind of have this connection during school, because we aren't obviously able to.
When was that date again?
It's February seventh.
February seventh, and it's done during school hours?
Yes, it's during school hours. And then January twenty-sixth, which is next Saturday, our academic team is going to Everett High School to perform in the Mass History Bowl. And this academic team was also, went to Williston, I believe, it was mid-December, and they actually beat Williston in an academic tournament. And so that was something that our team is very proud of and our school's proud of, that they performed so well. And they have studied very hard. It is very hard for them to know, if you have seen these academic bowls before, there is a lot of stuff that you need to know, and they have done an absolutely great job. And actually, there is, it's comprised of freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and seniors. And it's freshmen who have tried their best with school, becoming a freshman and joining on the team. So it is, kudos to them for doing so well on this. And then also in terms of academics, from a week and a half from now, our semester one is closing. So teachers are wrapping up their semester one, and I, I think it's a general consensus from a lot of teachers is that they haven't had enough time to teach what they want. And you'll see this every semester, the teachers say, I've had less time than I did this semester before. And whether that is actually true or not, it has seemed that there is either more material they need to cover, or just less time they have, or both. And so something that I think is good for what I, the classes I've had, is the teachers have been able to stay on top of it with some of the breaks in the schedule, whether it be a snow day, whether it be assembly or advisories. They have been able to pick up the pace, keep the students on track, and be able to finish their classes and be able to grade by this time. Because obviously, I don't know what it's like to be a teacher, but I can say from being close to some of the faculty members, just the upcoming week and getting followed, their final grades in for seniors who, any senior that has a ninety in a class as an average doesn't have to take the final, which is a good perk as a senior, because you do not want to take some of the finals, let me tell you. But it is good for us to have the experience to, to take the finals. But these teachers have to get grades in on one Friday, the day after they have two days of finals, and get ready for the next semester, all in one Friday. So I, I support them in whatever they choose to do, whether taking, having me take a final or not, having to do my grades, they... or not, having to do my grades, they deserve it, they work hard, they have a full week of school. We have Monday and Friday off, but they're still back in there on Friday, Friday morning, getting our grades done and getting those sent in. So I give them a lot of credit for that. The last thing I want to touch on is something that was referenced before, and that was the events prior to December break. And I want to discuss this as a student that experienced this and went through this. Starting off is the week prior, or following the events at Sandy Hook, we did observe a moment of silence for the victims of Sandy Hook. And I think that was something that was, needed to be done and was obviously well-done. And after that, of course, there was incidents at the high school that prompted the police to be present. And I can say that the police presence did its job in terms of making us feel comfortable. As a student in the high school, you do get taken back by the events that happened at Sandy Hook. I don't think it's, it's evident that no matter if you are a student or teacher, a parent, you were taken back by what happened. And you had to rethink of the safety of being in school. And for me, it was short-lived because I feel safe in school. I feel very comfortable with the teachers and my fellow students at school. I'm spending eight hours a day sometimes for 180 days with these students, with these teachers. It is my second home. I spend more time at the school than I almost do at home on a daily basis. And so I have to put some sort of trust, some belief in the people around me that I will be safe, and I do. And coming into school, seeing mishaps with the police chief and other police presence around the school, you start to think if something bad could happen, but it ends very quickly because you felt safe. There was not a moment after that that I didn't feel comfortable going to class, coming to school, seeing my friends, walking around the hallways during passing time. It was, I felt safe, and I felt that anything, anything that came up in me that I felt scared, I felt nervous, I could go to a teacher to talk to them. And I think that's what they wanted to be done, to know that we could go to anybody in the building and tell them that we feel safe. And obviously, there are some parents that are still concerned, some faculty that are still concerned. But as a student, I feel more, more safe than I did before the break and more safe than I did before the police presence. And if that was the goal of the police presence, it did its job. It wasn't, it's another perk because I, I just feel that what has happened has made the school more unified and more of a community because we are a community. Like I said before, we're a family, we spend a lot of our time together. And so being able to go to school and know that I will be safe is a very good feeling, and it's something that I treasure now. And it's disappointing to leave, going to be leaving as a senior to start new and be in a giant university, but the community that is at Northampton High School is stronger than it was before break, and I can tell you that personally, that as a student, I feel closer to every member, whether it be faculty or student, in the school now than I have ever had in my four years at the high school. So some people might think it is scary what has happened, and the debate will go on on all these different political issues, but in terms of how the students feel right now is that we are not worried about what happened. We are going on with our lives, we are moving on in school, we are focusing on our schoolwork, and we're focusing on being able to be a community at Northampton High School. So for those who worry about the emotional toll on us, as of now, a lot of us aren't worried about it. We are worried about doing good in school and being a teenager, being a kid, and that's what really matters right now. And I think faculty and the board has done a great job of making that seamless for us. So I thank you for that, and hopefully this will continue to be something I'm comfortable with and love going to school every day. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a gift, and this is from the Northampton Education Foundation's SOS Book Fund. And my friend Joe Bartolomeo is here from the NEF Board to make his annual presentation around the SOS Book Fund.
Happy New Year, everyone. It is my pleasure once again to present the annual check for the SOS Book Fund. As I'm sure you all know, the book fund goes, as its title suggests, for textbooks, library books, and their higher tech equivalents. And it's allocated on a per capita basis, based on the recommendations of the school councils of each school that are approved by the NEF Board. I like to mention every year that principal sources funding, there are two. The first is the annual census appeal, and I can say that just this week, the students from the National Honor Society helped fold 12,000 envelopes put into that appeal this year. The second is the annual plant sale on the day before Mother's Day, May 11th, at Smith Voke. This year, thanks to the generosity of our friends and neighbors, we were able to allocate $7 per student for a grand total of $18,438. So I have that for you today.
Thank you.
Yes, take flu precautions.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Joe, and thank you to NEF and to all the folks who work so hard to raise these funds. I want to ask for a motion from the school committee to accept this gift in the amount of $18,438.
I move to accept the gift.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. Is there any discussion or any?
With gratitude, thank you.
With gratitude, okay.
I'm disappointed that you didn't come with a.
Yeah. So, so there's been a motion made and seconded to accept this gift gratefully. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you again. Okay, the next item on the agenda is reports from the Rules and Policy Subcommittee on a couple of different policies, and I'll turn it over to the Chair of Rules and Policy.
Okay.
Technology acceptable use policy is the first on my agenda.
This has come, let's see, Angelo Roca, our technology director, brought this to us last, late last fall, and we almost didn't like anything about it. So we, because it basically included a lot of procedures, and it was written not in the same vein, the same tone as our normal school committee policies. So we sent him back to the drawing board with a lot of recommendations and requests, and he came back to us, when was it, December? December? December, with a revised recommendation, and we just pretty much couldn't find anything wrong with it. We liked it very much. It's clear that the goal here is to encourage use of technology while still maintaining enough structure and enough control that we don't allow students to access information that we don't believe is appropriate. We encourage students to be careful consumers of the information in that we ask them to realize that there is misinformation available on the internet. It's also designed, the policy is designed to cover all users, which is to say both students and faculty. And so there is some, there are some guidelines about faculty members who are creating websites or who are using social network sites for educational and instructional purposes. So he did a very good job of trying to integrate a lot of components into one policy and also to be forward-thinking enough that we don't have to change it in six months, or hopefully even a year. I think he's done a good job. So I move and the Rules and Policy Committee recommends approval of the acceptable use policy for student students.
Is there a second to that?
Actually, do we have to have it two readings? Okay, so this is really just the first one, so I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
So this is really just your first view of it, but we are recommending it.
Okay.
So, and if you have any questions or concerns or suggestions, you can get in touch with me or with Annie, and we will.
So this will come back at the future meeting for an actual, for a vote?
I'm sorry, forgot, we did two readings of policies.
Okay. So are there any comments or questions about it at this point for the committee members? Okay, hearing none. The next policy that you have to present is the health policy for the physical exam of students. I notice our school health director is here.
This policy is covering some of the required tests that we do of students. I think, I, yeah, it would be most helpful if Karen would stand up and explain it to you, the background of it.
Okay, so we'll recognize Karen Jarvis Vance, our city's health director, school health director.
All right. We decided to revise this policy based on new recommendations that continue to come down from the Department of Public Health around screening of students. So our old policy was very specific in naming screenings, hearing, vision, postural. Now we have new, well, we've always done height and weight, but we're now required by law to do height and weight and calculate BMI and report that to parents. And it is foreseeable in the future that a new screening may be recommended or a screening may be taken away. So all this is, is a revision of the policy, first to add a nice vision philosophy statement, and then to make it more broad in saying that we're just going to adhere to the recommendations of the Department of Public Health as it applies to screenings and reporting to parents. So that in the future, whether they take away a screening or add a screening, we won't have to constantly revise the policy. That's the gist of it.
She said make it more broad. I think we were, we were trying to clarify how data would be used, any data that we collect.
Right, well, we added that, that piece of it, that, that we actually use the data that is collected in the aggregate, non-identifiable, to improve the health of our students. That was added in there as well.
Do you have a question, Mr.?
I had a couple, this is just the first reading, right?
Yes.
I had a couple of comments. One was that when I read it initially, this is just a writing thing, the physical exam paragraph, I guess paragraph, is that two or three? I was not clear if that was, if that was included in the screenings that are performed in the school or if the screenings, you know, it didn't sort of, wasn't set off enough as being separate from those screenings.
Physical exams.
The screenings were all happening in the schools with school nurses.
Right, physical exams are sometimes as well. So this policy is meant to cover screenings and physical exams.
But in general, the physical exams are done by children's doctors.
That's what we would prefer, but occasionally they are done in the schools.
And that's what's not really clear. And when I read this, it was, I don't know, it just, it was confusing. It didn't state that clearly that we, you know, required, you know.
So if we.
The school nurse keeps the copies.
In a sense, if these are done by your private doctor, the school nurse will review and keep copies?
Something like that, or we encourage it to be done by your private doctor. I just, just actually say that because I think that, I know that's the policy, but you should say.
Or we could even put in the last sentence of the first paragraph when it says school screenings under this policy, school screenings and physical exams under this policy are intended to supplement, not plant oversight of care by the student's primary care provider. We could add it there as well.
Except that makes it sound as though the physicals aren't being done by the regular care provider, and they usually are, so I don't know.
So are screenings.
To address that.
Because sometimes we don't do screenings on students if they've done. It's the same thing.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I always, I knew about the screenings happening.
Screens often are done by the physician as well during a physical exam. So a lot of students are exempted from scoliosis screening, a lot of our preschoolers are exempted from vision screening because it's been done, because we prefer it to be done by the regular.
Yeah, well, so I guess, I think that should, needs to be somehow rather stated clearly in here. And then the other one I had a real question about was the last paragraph. I don't even, how, how would the school physician determine that they are going to examine a school employee? Who refers them?
The nurses do.
Okay, well, I think it should say that.
And that's not a change from the.
Otherwise, the school physician, you know.
It's not a change from the original policy, that's not sort of change.
I think it maybe ought to be changed because it's not clear who the referral is by. It just sort of seemed like a very odd thing, like in his opinion, I've got to go examine this employee, you know?
Generally, in the case of some sort of outbreak of.
Right, I understand that, so, but.
I wonder if also, I didn't notice this previously, but protection of the student's health may require it. I wonder if that should be a plural possessive.
It should be.
It should.
Got it.
Or it could just be of student health. Get rid of the preposition as well.
But, so, so we have two requests to revise this, which we can look at on Monday if we get through the rules procedure in time and bring back to you revised policy.
Okay.
If ever we need.
Great.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Jarvis Vance?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are any other item, any other issues from Rules and Policy? Hearing none. I will move on to a report of the Budget and Property Subcommittee, and Mr. Zehowski?
Okay, we met recently, and there isn't a whole lot to report, but I will hit the highlights. We did go once again to look at the FY 13 budget, and then we heard in, in and around the capital improvements that were submitted, and I believe, Mayor, they passed through second reading last Thursday, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So those that were presented to us at our last meeting and discussed at our Subcommittee meeting, that money has been approved for those capital projects for this year. I can go through those if you'd like, but I won't if you don't want me to, but.
So this whole list?
So the whole list that you had last month, those capital projects have been funded through capital improvements. So that was $100,000 for technology improvements, $44,000 for ground maintenance stump truck, $24,000 for portable generator and transfer switches, also the $12,500 for the video surveillance system at the Northampton High School. Those are the cameras that were donated from the police station, the old police station that will now be installed at the high school. Ryan Road School, $15,000 for some chimney repair stacks, or some chimney stack repairs. So that was good news, and we're grateful to Capital Improvements and the city for allocating those funds to our schools for those upgrades and improvements. And we did lastly talk about the FY 14 budget process and how it's changed now under the charter, trying to, start to think about some timelines and how we're going to go about scheduling meetings and trying to create a budget without having certain information and numbers in place. And so I think that's about it. Howard or Stephanie, anything to add?
I would only just underline, I think you all know it, but make sure everybody's really clear about that the $100,000 for the technology was really the first part of essentially a three-year plan, and it will be spent on the most important but also the least visible components of technology, so infrastructure within the schools in terms of various sorts of switches and things which you can't actually use until you get some more equipment later, but that you can't use that other equipment unless you have it first. So really important for people to understand that when we're looking to purchase additional technology next year, it is actually a continuation of this year's policy, it's not more.
The request, the original, the request to the Capital Improvements Committee was $300,000.
Correct.
We were only able to spend $100,000 in this round.
So essentially, the first phase of actual.
Pat's my hope.
Yes.
Any other questions regarding budget, the Budget and Property Committee report? Okay, so then we'll move on to the Business Manager's Report, and Mr. McLaughlin?
Couple noteworthy items, one that we just talked about was the capital plan. The total of all the monies that were approved on the individual products, or the individual project is $195,500. So out of all the capital monies that had been approved, we have $195,000 for those projects as Mr. Zehowski had explained. We're also scheduled on another note for a district audit, just as a reminder by the Department of Ed, that's coming up on January 31st. They'll be coming here to do an audit. It's. It's one of those, we've been randomly picked and they're coming out to pay us a visit and see how we're doing.
Yeah, that's a one.
Contracts, a rare, a rare night, we have none. Financial, the financial statement you have is in your package. There are still some items that are in there that are still being reviewed, some items that are under budget, and there's a couple that are over budget. But I'll be going into a more detailed forecast on specific line items when we get to our Budget and Property meetings and we start delving into each of the line items and start discussing the various, areas where either we could save or we know we might be a little bit over. That is, that will be coming up on that financial. We're about forty-three point four percent spent for the whole year. That's pretty much on target where we are right now in January, give or take a point or two. But that's a pretty good percentage of being on target. So if you did the math and you knew of a few of the nuances that happened behind the scenes, we're right there in how we're spending. We do have a couple of unplanned expenses coming up because of a few nights that we've been really cold, down into the zero category. At the high school, we've had a few broken pipes. So we've had some water leakage, we've had some reinstituting of glycol type substances in the system, we've had some repairs, there's been some labor incurred. I think we've hit most of the weak spots that we've been able to identify with our contractor, but it's one of those unfortunate instances that have happened. We've addressed it and we're back up and running. Student information systems. We're continuing our review of the, the companies that we think best fit our district. And just to throw out a couple of names, and I don't know if they mean anything to all of you, but I pass his name of a company, Power School, Aspen, Infinite Campus, and Riddicker. Those are the vendors that we are seeing their demos and reviewing what options they have for us. And just a minute follow-up on your request from last, last month, we did talk to the collaborative. They do carry some licenses that we can piggyback into. I don't know if they will apply to our situation, but they do have licenses that are available that they can share with participating communities. And we did check in with them. They're going to come back and give us some details to see if one of these vendors, I think, qualify under that, so we will use that in our process of evaluation. The capital plan, you heard that, that was just discussed, I don't need to reiterate that. The budget status, we're still analyzing different things for FY13. I know there's still been talk about nine seat cuts coming out. I think everything still stays pretty much status quo in the nine seat cuts. There's nothing really drastic that I have seen come to my desk that's going to change anything that I've talked about in the past. And we'll be meeting with Budget and Property hopefully shortly after the mayor comes out with his guidelines as to how we proceed in the budget process.
Thank you. Personnel report, I believe you.
Can I ask a question about?
Sure, certainly, certainly.
This is a question that came up from Bridge Street School regarding the budget freeze and the fact that they have not got somebody sitting at the front desk, you know, the person who buzzes people in through the door and because she retired in October, I think. And so it has not been, that position hasn't been replaced due to the freeze, but they really need someone there. That person's also the person who supervises kids who are sent to the office for timeout and so on. So they really are having a problem with not having a person there to do these rather straightforward tasks.
I know they've had some substitutes in, filling in to cover on that position. And I know we have received the retirement of one of the individuals at Bridge Street that will be retiring at the end of the year. We do have some monies because if the position was originally budgeted for, unless the principal at the school had shifted those monies, which I don't think she has. So I think right now she's filling with substitutes in that position. I have not talked with her in the last couple of weeks just due to other things, but I can give her a call and find out if she needs to expedite that process or she hasn't found somebody to fit that position or not.
I don't, my understanding was that she was under the impression that she couldn't fill it.
If it's a replacement, yes. If it's a brand-new position, no. Because that would.
No, it's, it's an old position, it's an existing position.
You should have money if it's an existing.
She, she's under the understanding that she can't replace it as a result of the budget freeze. So perhaps you should.
I'll call her, I'll straighten it out.
Are there any other questions for Mr. McLaughlin regarding the Business Managers' Report? Okay. Personnel report?
Personnel report, you have the new hires that have been brought on for the month of December. You've seen a, a couple of separations that have been noted in, in the report. No retirements as of December and no promotions or transfers. So it was a smaller, lower month of activity.
Okay. Then finally, we have a report from Johanna McKenna on the DIP progress. You want to let us know what.
Yes, I will. District. I'm usually up presenting the school improvement plan, but this is the district improvement plan and it's just a progress update. Everything isn't finalized and I'm not sure honestly if this is the first time you've seen an update or if this is. This is the first time? Okay. So if you recall at our retreat, when we were developing the district improvement plan, we set up three basic objectives. One was deepen and refine the focus on instructional academic achievement to meet the needs of students and support teacher growth. That was one. The second one was to develop a plan to support arts, music, enrichment activities, sports edu, sports education and commit the resources, the financial resources necessary. And the third one was to build systems to support technology so that we can make use of data to evaluate and improve student achievement and expect teachers to use technologically innovative instruction. So those were the goals that kind of focused the district this year. And so today, and you'll see in the columns, it gives you the, the actual objectives that we were working on. So I'm just going to quickly go down and if you have any questions. By October 30th, this is under, in the first column, deepen and refine the focus on instruction. Fifty percent of the faculty from each school will be participating in the mass evaluation, the new mass teacher evaluation system, that's been, that's done. Ninety-five percent by September 2013, ninety-five percent of all fifth and sixth grade students will receive standards-based math instruction within the inclusion setting and a co-teaching model. There's significant progress made, there's a lot of inclusion happening. We are still working on the co-teaching aspect of it because part of that has to do with scheduling, but by and large, the majority of fifth and sixth grade students are receiving math instruction in the regular classroom setting. By, the next one, by September 2013, benchmark assessments will be identified, developed and implemented K to 12. Those are in the major content areas, reading, math, science. And what they are basically doing is tracking students' progress over a period of months so that teachers have a good sense and can give that to the parents of what progress students are making as they go through the curriculum. Right now, we have been making, have some progress on that, so, but it's not even. The school, JFK, actually has made significant progress in developing benchmarks across all the curriculum areas. The elementary schools have benchmark assessments available for literacy and we're fine-tuning a benchmark assessment for mathematics. And high school is, is working on theirs. They're, they're kind of just beginning the process. So I, it, we've made some progress, but it's, it's kind of uneven at this point. The next one is during the twenty, the 2012, 13 evaluation cycle, all faculty will incorporate as part of their, this is their individual professional development plan, that's what IPDP stands for, and it's required now under the evaluation system that all teachers have a professional development plan. One goal focused on the implementation of the curriculum frameworks, that's done. That was done as part of the evaluation process with the principals. By January thirteen, 2013, faculties at a grade level will have identified three standards from each of the 2011 mass frameworks in English, Language Arts and Math in need of improvement based on analysis of the MCAS data in each school. And also, so the, every, in that column under instruction, we have, they're all done except for the co-teaching inclusion for math, there's significant progress, and the benchmarking assessments, we've made a lot of progress, but it's still not complete. Yes?
I have a question about the benchmark assessments. I mean, eventually you'll have this matrix which will be through the year and by subject and then by grade. And I'm wondering, could, if you could share that with us as, even if it's a work in progress, just for us to see how this is coming together and maybe get a sense of how faculty in different subject areas and in different buildings are coordinating so that, you know, assessments are not all piled on top of each other and so that, you know, they're getting useful data and so that, you know, each of the subjects, I guess, has a, a chance to gather the data and then respond to it appropriately. So I'd be really interested in seeing as that matrix comes together.
That's a great idea.
You know, just a, you know, even a provisional of, of where it stands would be great.
Well, I can basically say now that for the benchmarks, it's usually, it happens at three points in the year, the beginning of the year, sometime around January, February, and at the end of the year. And in the middle, there's what's called progress monitoring, where teachers are, might be giving quizzes or might be collecting data, kind of in the middle. But the goal of doing that is so that you don't come to the end of the year and realize some student is really missed, you know, and is going to fail the class. You know, we have plenty of time to, you know, give them the information and maybe change up the instruction so that you keep them on track to complete the, the course. So, yeah, we could give you that information. Any other questions on that, that particular column? Okay, the next column is around, all around schedules and figuring out how we can infuse arts, music, arts, music, enrichment activities and sports education into the relatively short academic school day. So there's been some progress on expanding the length of the school day. I think this is also tied up a little bit into, in the discussions that we've been having about the high school start time and lengthening the time in the.
Never heard of it.
Never heard of that part? And lengthening the time in elementary schools. So there's been some progress, but this is still an ongoing discussion that's happening. Also, it's a, the next one was the school committee will engage in collaborative bargaining in an effort to create a schedule that includes duties for teachers at all levels. Again, I'm putting some progress about this, isn't something that the administration can do directly, but I know that we're supportive of this effort. And the next one is examining, develop a committee to examine the effectiveness of the school's schedule at each building, which will provide more time for art, music and electas and community service learning. And actually, there's been significant progress in this. Each one of the buildings basically has a, a scheduled committee and they're looking at how to best use the time in their buildings and figure out how to make sure that we're effectively using the academic time. And hopefully, once that piece is done, will be possible to figure out how to infuse more of the, the arts programs in. So I think, you know, there's been a lot of progress in that area in each, at the building level. Extend the hours of all libraries and computer labs for up to an hour from the end of the school day. That's been, that was done. We did, we just kind of decided that in September. So all, the school libraries are available for student use after the school day.
I have a question about that. How, how is that being staffed?
It's not being staffed.
So they're simply.
Except for volunteers, but they're available.
So they are open?
They are open. We can't, can't afford to staff it except for volunteers.
Yes. Can I ask you about the, when you say infuse some of these other activities into the school day, are you speaking of creating slots of time for those things or are you talking about integrated disciplines?
Oh, I'm not talking about, I mean, it would be nice to do integrated interdisciplinary.
Music and math class or whatever.
I know.
Yeah.
But no, we, we would be talking more about really finding, stretching the amount of time that we have for, say, art, music and PE so the kids get actually more instruction or adding additional courses maybe at the high school.
I mean, does the, do the curriculum frameworks and the new common core allow for that kind of interdisciplinary approach?
Yes, they do. Absolutely, they do.
And so what's, what's the roadblock to that? Is it really just time for teachers to prepare those lessons and the availability or the interest or is it?
I would say that it's, you know, what is.
Comfort thing or a time thing?
What is really underfunded in addition to the library, the library being open, is time for, it's a considerable amount of time for teachers to develop units that are like that. And as you, as you know, there's a limited amount of preparation time that teachers have during a school day and the optimal time to do things like that is in the summertime when people can have more concentrated time to work with their colleagues. The problem with that is financial too, is finding the money to support that work in the summertime. It's very challenging to do it during a school year. Okay. Any other questions about that column? Okay, the last column is building systems to support technology. So the first one is done. People are, have, been, principals have been identifying effective uses of technology and finding teachers that are willing to share their expertise with their colleagues in how they're using technology in the classroom. And teachers did go to workshops last summer. There's been some progress on the next one, which is developing a district technology plan. Right now, as you know, Angelo's been really busy in learning about and then trying to assess the areas of need particularly in hardware to make sure that the district has the hardware capacity to do what we want to do with technology. And that's really been the focus of the work that he's been doing so far. And the third one is the school committee will prioritize funding for the technology department and that is also being done. That's part of our request to the city for capital funds to support technology, which they were so kind enough to approve. On the next page, by October 12th, 2012, we will make a decision on new student information systems, as Mark McLaughlin mentioned in his report. We are still in the process of that, so we made significant progress, but we haven't made a final decision because I think at the end of, by the end of the month, they will have, all the vendors will have made their presentation, so I expect it will be fairly soon that the decision will be made, but we missed the deadline of October. Administrators and teachers will use current and developing technology tools to improve communication, websites, calendars, that's being done. Angelo is migrating us into Google, the Google Docs and Google Apps and all of those shared calendar things which we haven't had in the past, which will be really significant in improving efficiency, the administrative efficiency and communication. And data teams, all the schools have data teams and they have been receiving training and analyzing the data at the school level and they'll be using that data to inform their school improvement plans and that's, that's considered. So, you know, I think that the new. So, you know, I think that the new strat, the new SMART goals process that we use for developing the district improvement plan and the, and the school improvement plans have really helped keep the system focused, I think, on what were our main goals. And so, I think it was a very useful process in a very positive format. So, any questions about technology?
When, when this, did this district improvement plan get decided on, do you remember? Or was that from our retreat? Was it in the...
Well, we decided on, we decided on the goals on the retreat.
And that was August's?
It was early August.
Yeah.
That was January.
No, you know, actually, yeah, I think the first time we had the retreat was not in the summer. I think we were working on some of the objectives in the summer. It was before the summer.
Was it maybe January?
About January.
So, this was, so this is a year-old this document?
Yes.
So, I, I'm just, one, I'm thrilled to get a midterm kind of report. I don't think we've ever had anything like that before. I don't think we've ever had such a, quite a clear plan like this before either. And I'm just, I'm, it's, it's really impressive to hear that we're pretty much staying on track with things and it's, it's great to have somebody leading that, thank you.
Well, it's, what's great about it is, that's what I think was so powerful about this particular one, was because it made it very easy to keep ourselves focused, but also to document the actual work that got accomplished. It wasn't as sort of open-ended as the formats that we had been using before.
It's like a combination of measurable goals and a timeline, it's all in one there and it really, I guess, has kept you, kept you on task.
It, you know, yes, it has, and the superintendent is very good at that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. McKenna? Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, so that concludes our series of reports and recommendations. I do not believe we have any new business this evening. Well, I, Mr. Moore?
I do have some questions regarding the, the evidence, or I guess it was handwriting samples that were collected at the high school. And I, essentially, I, I, can I make a statement about that? I don't think we have any...
I'm not really, the superintendent, obviously, is not here and, and I know that this is something that the police and the administration and particularly the building administration at the high school had worked together on.
No, I'm not interested so much in what's in the past, it's more because, I mean, I think there are serious issues there, but the, the thing that we want to sort of address now has to do with the evidence that, you know, this was collected from 800 people who most certainly all were completely innocent, no suspicion of guilt, and it is currently in the possession of, I assume, the district attorney or the FBI or Homeland Security or our police department, I don't know, but it, I think, would be very important for it to be returned to the schools.
Thank you for that statement. Thank you. Any other items or issues under new business?
Okay. So, there are a listing of future business and meeting dates on the agenda. Obviously, we've heard the Rules and Policy Subcommittee will be meeting on Monday, January 14th at 1:00 PM in the central office building at 212 Main Street. The Budget and Property Office Subcommittee will also be meeting, will be meeting on Thursday, January 24th, 4:00 PM in the central offices, also 212 Main Street. The Special School Committee, well, I'll also interject, there's the Joint School Committee-City Council meeting on January 31st, 7:00 PM here in the community room. There's a Special School Committee slash Alt District Improvement Plan meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February 5th at 6:30 PM here at JFK and then we're back to your regular meetings of, for February 14th at 7:15 PM here at JFK. So, that's the upcoming future business meeting dates. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any objections? The meeting is adjourned.